Second item on the agenda is, uh, Lower Town area school district request for a waiver of land development for the Lower Town High School project. And as, as mentioned earlier and also by Mr. Leister, uh, this initially was brought forth to the planning commission and the planning commission is recommending that we reject that request. So, uh, I know we have a lot of individuals here, uh, from the school district. Um, Chris, it's okay if I basically get some comments from them, correct?
Absolutely.
All right. Uh, you have a presentation problem?
Yes. Thank you, uh, Row Council. I am the front mayor. Uh, my name is Dave Zbrowski. I'm the business administrator for the Lower Town School District. Uh, while our architects get their presentations set up, uh, I'd like to just address you with a few comments. Before I start though, I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce you to our new acting superintendent, uh, Jay Drew Miles, uh, started last week. Uh, Mr. Miles is the acting superintendent, unfully controlled position, however he wants to. We welcome him. We're not going to let him talk tonight since he's not really familiar with us tonight. Uh, so that, that would be for me. Uh, we appreciate you, uh, considering this waiver tonight. Uh, we had met, uh, with Mrs. Loder and the members of Colbertdale Township, uh, a few months ago, nine months ago almost, and, uh, we had asked if this project, uh, on going, that we could spark out some kind of, uh, agreement so that, uh, we wouldn't have to report to two planning, uh, commissions. Uh, since more than ninety percent of the work is being done in Colbertdale Township, uh, we have submitted a waiver. So, uh, I know we've worked very closely with the Lower Town Borough in the past and we just appreciate your, uh, understanding in, uh, in granting this waiver. Uh, if you, uh, we're here tonight to present some information. We've, we've done this at many of our school board meetings and our committee meetings and, uh, but it's very difficult to get a lot of folks out. So, we appreciate this opportunity to share some information, answer any questions you might have. And, uh, what we would ask is that if you do see fit to, uh, deny our waiver tonight, uh, if you could come up with some kind of alternative that we could possibly live with so that your planning commission could work with the Colbertdale Planning Commission, uh, so that it wouldn't burden us with, uh, added time and added expense to the review of our land development plan. So, uh, tonight I have with us the, uh, our E.I. associates. We have Mark Martin, who's the lead architect. Uh, we have Tim Martin, our project manager. Uh, we have Rob Walsh, who, uh, is doing, uh, the land development surveys. So, I'll turn it over to Mark to make a presentation and answer any questions.
I'll ask Rob to also assist me. Uh, just to, uh, look at this plan. This is the site plan that was, uh, submitted to, uh, Colbertdale Township and also to the Borough. You can see that, uh, we're indicating on this plan, the existing building is in the brown color with the proposed additions in, uh, blue. Uh, this is the, uh, separation of Borough and, uh, Colbert and Township line. So, you can see a portion of the property that rests in the, uh, different municipalities. So, uh, Rob has already made submission, uh, to Colbertdale Township.
Uh, well, to, to the Borough. Uh, we haven't submitted. We're in the process of rocking up the land development plan. And I believe, um, you know, with my impression that, uh, the Borough had more or less agreed that Colbertdale Township would take the lead as the, uh, reviewing municipality. And in my request that I submitted in, uh, last month, uh, at the end of May, uh, I indicated that we would, uh, we would copy the Borough, uh, on precisely what we were submitting to Colbertdale Township and would be receptive to any, uh, comments. And, uh, that's pretty much it. That's something that...
I think it's important to understand that we're not asking for a waiver from the land development review. Uh, we are making a full land development set of drawings and we're making a submission. Normally in a situation where a, uh, a building falls in two municipalities, uh, one municipality will comment to the other municipality. So, we receive a joint set of, uh, comments and, uh, we can adjust the drawings accordingly. So, we are looking for your feedback on our submission. Uh, we're just asking for it to come through, the submission that we made, uh, to the adjoining municipality due to the portion of the project that rests, uh, in Colbertdale Township.
It would be helpful if we just went over the project. I don't think anybody's explained anything. Always submit the, uh, four drawing sheets and a, a letter request.
Absolutely. But asking you to do that and then in particular, the changes or effects that are in Borough or Lower Town.
Now, uh, if it gets too confusing, let me know because the plans...
If anyone from the audience would just move over here to get a better look at this, please feel free to do so.
Uh, these were the plans that were developed earlier on in the project, some of the construction plans. And what we did was follow the nineteen ninety-two, uh, orientation of the site when the last substantial renovations behind the place. So, you see that the area shaded in green, this is the green area of shade and green, falls within the Borough and then the, uh, the golden portion is within Colbertdale Township. The plans that were submitted to the district were oriented the other way around because, uh, in that case that north would basically be running under pave. So, if you can get over that difference, then I'll explain the project. As Mark had mentioned, the existing building is in the dark brown color and we're proposing additions where the dark blue bump outs of the building are. Uh, reorientation or realignment of existing paved areas are shown in the dark gray. Uh, one of the big elements of this project, that would be an alternate bid item, would be the extension of Monroe, uh, street out to Montgomery Ave. Uh, it's being, uh, designed as an add alternate, uh, and it'll be permitted to be fully constructable, but, uh, it's going to be based on, uh, available funds, whether, uh, it can go so ahead.
The plan is to use this as the, uh, construction, uh, entrance, uh, and, uh, access to the, to the site, uh, during the construction of the project, which will keep, uh, construction vehicles out of Borough and that they would mainly be coming in across the campus along construction. It will also allow for staging areas out in this area of the site while the entire phasing of the project and the construction staging, uh, hasn't been fully developed at this time, but this is the plan that has been discussed with the district and also with the construction manager that will be managing the construction.
Currently there are, who, say, how many parking spaces are on the site? Six hundred and forty parking spaces throughout the site and that includes an estimate of how many spaces are in the gravel lot, uh, between the school and the baseball field. And what we're doing is we're proposing, uh, seven hundred and thirty parking spaces total throughout the site. To accomplish this, uh, we're converting, there's, uh, eight tennis courts out there now at two separate locations terraced, uh, on the east side of the school. We're going to convert the, uh, tennis courts closest to the school into parking spaces to get that. And then we're, we're going to gang, try to get eight space, get eight tennis courts in one area, uh, further to the east of that.
Can I, uh...
Sure.
Uh, I want to make sure my notes are accurate. The existing parking spaces at what count?
Roughly six hundred and forty parking spaces.
And how many of those are paved now?
Oh, that's a good question. Uh, I don't have that number right here, but we, uh, I, you know what? If you allow me to go by memory, I would say eighty spaces I had or eighty to a hundred in the gravel area, uh, and the rest were all officially just paved. But we have that information. Eventually that'll make it on the plans. We'll be...
And the new total is seven forty?
Seven hundred and thirty.
Seven thirty is the required amount.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's currently seven forty-two. That's, that's on the site. But the seven thirty is the requirement based on the, uh, on the ordinance.
Right. And I, I believe on the T1 sheet I made, or maybe the second sheet that I tabulated. So, that information was submitted as it stands.
Did you miss any? I thought you said there are seven forty now? I think it said six forty.
I don't think so.
Let's, can you also cross six forty?
The plan says six forty. Six forty current.
Yes.
Including the gravel lot.
Including, yes, there's six hundred and forty existing.
Okay.
Six forty existing.
Okay.
Seven fifty-five.
And this is what we want. So, we're exceeding what's...
Will the gravel lot remain a gravel lot?
No.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
And I think the, uh, I mean, this is still under development and we're still working on some parking, uh, for busting and things. So, the, uh, the required amount is seven thirty. The actual count is, is fluctuating based on how we're developing some of the, uh, parking and the entrance into the site, but we are exceeding our required.
And this project is being designed as a, uh, lead for schools project, which is probably a lot of people know that, lead is, uh, leaders in environmental and energy design. And, uh, we're trying to incorporate energy efficient, uh, features into the building and, uh, we, um, design features, uh, that meet minimum environmental standards.
There was, uh, some discussion earlier in the project about the original, uh, high school and the status of that at this point in time. The board has, uh, uh, the school board has voted to, uh, keep this, uh, entire, uh, building and they have developed a committee, Mr. Zbrowski, that is looking into the use of that as this project is going through construction. But the, uh, uh, school will be used as an education facility for the next several years while the project is under construction. At that point in time, the district, uh, will determine another use for that project or for that part of the building. Some more committee work.
And while we're asking for waiver from land development, uh, we have not, you know, we're still in the process of pulling everything together and then we'll submit it to Colbertdale Township. We've identified two variances, which are shown on the plans from this, uh, zoning ordinance, that being the parking space size. We're, I believe we're asking for a nine by eighteen, which is a typical standard, uh, in an effort to, uh, in keeping with the lead, uh, concept, minimize the amount of impervious coverage, also minimize the impact storm management. Uh, the other item is, uh, could potentially be landscaping, although I don't think landscaping's got any issue. But, uh, in this parking area, which does occur in, uh, Borough, uh, we have a green strip that we're going to align the parking with, uh, oh, I can't remember this street right here. One closest to the school. It's not Fort, uh, this is Fort, but, uh, that's...
The alley.
The alley. That alley, if you, this parking area that's on the Colbertdale side of the, the boundary is ten, like roughly ten feet from the, uh, property on the, I should say, edge of pavement within the alley. In the Borough, it's, there's a wider green strip. In order to get the more parking closer to the stadium area and places that are utilized on site, we want to align that. It'll increase the amount of parking overall in this area and according to the table in the zoning ordinance, we need, uh, certain buffers from that strip and, and that's one of the variances. I said we need, and I've identified everyone, T1. But, uh, that type of thing, it's occurring in both. Council, are we going to the zoning hearing board? Both councils, if we have to do that, we have to do that, but we kind of like wanted consensus that that would be an appropriate waiver, given the conditions of the school site and the, the, uh, parking, uh, condition that I hear from a lot of people is an issue in terms of getting to some of the events that happen in the school site. So, uh, and we're, we look to the town, to the Borough and the township in multiple cases of how to meet protests. We have to go to both. That's fine. The heck of a thing if one says no way and the other one says yeah, that's fine. So...
The other thing is, is the, is the cost of that, we both municipalities are going to hire a third party engineer to utilize and develop. I'm sure that's what you do and that's what Colbertdale Township would do. So, it's possible that both municipalities agree on the same engineer to do the land development review, but I think our, our intent in asking for, uh, this is for one municipality to take the lead in the review with their consultants and do the, uh, do the land development review and then the comments that the other municipality would have would also be reviewed and incorporated into the project, but we wouldn't have, uh, two engineering firms doing the land development review. And that's, uh, the process that we've gone through in other school districts. We currently are working on two other projects now that, that have a similar situation and in both of those cases, the, uh, municipality has, uh, given the, uh, the other municipality the lead in the land development, the lead process. The costs actually go back to the school district, so in, in a sense, it's costing all the taxpayers a lot more money to have two different, um, land development reviews. So, we're totally going through the process as it was designed to go through and that's not the intent of our, of our waiver to, uh, go around that process. The intent is, as I mentioned, for, uh, one municipality to take...
Uh, can you talk a little bit about stormwater management? I'm not familiar with the topography out there. So, where's the storm we're going now and, uh, where will we go with the improvements that are promoted?
Uh, bear in mind that north is to the left on this, so, uh, the, um, the entire site drains to the east towards Swamp Creek and, uh, Colbertdale Township has the Swamp Creek where shed management criteria, which we'll be abiding by. Uh, what we had, and there's a, there's a storm drain that connects into this main storm line that, that runs to an unnamed tributary that connects to, uh, ultimately to Swamp Creek. But, uh, we have various areas draining into this main trunk line, which is like a seven by five foot culvert running under the site. So, uh, we're going to, uh, in some of these areas, we're actually, because we're creating rain spaces around a building where there's currently parking, we're going to have a net reduction in impervious, but obviously other areas we have increased. So, we're going to try to, we have to do stormwater recharge. So, many of the features will be below grade and then they'll, uh, control and treat runoff at the source before discharging that culprit. So, that's essentially it, but we have new impervious areas on both sides of that, that main trunk line that we'll have to manage at the location of the new impervious.
So, the, the stormwater flows from the site towards the township or...
Uh, it flow, it, actually it runs, um, from west to east and along the north side of the Borough. So, it, it cuts across the site headed towards, uh, Gilbert Zone.
So, it basically flows away from the Borough into the township?
Yes. And, uh, I actually have the, uh, rain drainage areas, but it's not small.
Uh, two, two, uh, can you talk a little bit about, and I think everyone can see the black diagonal line running with the E.I., I assume that's the boundary between, uh, the Borough and Colbertdale. Can you talk a little bit about the proposed construction or changes in the, in the Borough portion there? I mean, originally in some of these discussions months ago, talked about the removal of a, of a, of an area between the old building and, and the new building and, and drive and...
And that's not going to happen anymore. The school board voted that the, uh, the old building, uh, from the nineteen twenty-nine to the nineteen thirty-eight section will remain intact.
That I understand, but then, I thought then the, the plan was still, is it still to remove that, that connecting part from the old building to the new and, and make a roadway so you have a, a flow of traffic that...
Well, that, that was the original plan, but...
But that's changed?
Yes. I mean, the, the, it's the nineteen thirty-eight portion has the stairwell, uh, the stairwell. That would have been removed to allow for free motion around without going on to Four Street, but that has since, uh, been removed.
How is that? How are you changing that?
Uh, we're not. We're actually going to have to go out on Four Street and come in through Madison or, uh, and come off the K.
So, the old and the new will, what we call the old and new, will still remain connected?
They will, but, uh...
That's correct.
If you want to explain the firewall because of the lead boundary.
It, this gets a little complicated in a sense, but on a lead project, uh, you have to have a lead site boundary around the project and everything within that boundary has to meet the, uh, criterias of a breed building and be renovated to that criteria. So, at this point, we have a lead boundary between these buildings because this isn't being renovated as part of the school at this point in time. And maybe the board will elect to do that at a later time, but at this point in time, it will be used as a school until it's completed and then there, uh, there's a committee that is exploring the future use of it. So, at this point in time, depending how this building would be used, if it would be, uh, a use other than a school, then we may have to separate the use groups between that building and it then could require a firewall. If the use group that uses that, or if it remains a school building or district office or whatever it might be, uh, then that could be renovated as a lead project and then the entire site would become the lead boundary and this would also be a lead school. So, we may need to put a firewall between there based on how the building's used. Uh, we may end up with separate utilities, uh, feeding that building or a separate mechanical system, but at this point, uh, board is moving forward in the project and then they're looking to try to determine this maybe before the project goes out bid, maybe sometime while the project is under construction. But we have a, a duration of two years of construction and during those two years, this will be classroom space. Uh, so the district will be using this for, for at least two more years. We're looking to go out to bid in December and then the project will be, uh, phase construction. So, we'll start to build some of the new while this is continuing to be used, uh, as students move around in the building through the upgrades of the mechanical system, uh, they'll continue to use this space.
And my other comment is directed more towards the school, the school board and its members. I heard these gentlemen explain the extension of Monroe Street out to Montgomery Ave to add on to the bid and I'm familiar with how that works and that's definitely a concern to the Borough. Obviously our concerns here are traffic. Uh, your, I assume your plans are still to make this a four grade education center, which means you're increasing the best, uh, the population here by twenty-five percent in traffic that, that goes along with that. Uh, so that's a, that's very much a concern and I would like to defer, unfortunately I was not able to be at that planning commission meeting. I'd like to ask either a Borough manager or Mr. Fryer is here, who is a member of the planning commission. Any thoughts, uh, begin the conversation at that meeting that you'd like to, uh, relay to these gentlemen, why the decision was made?
My initial comment would be that we've received the, we've received the plans, uh, Matt was in position to pass them on to us and then at the meeting, the particular meeting that night, uh, there was no representative there to even talk to us about, about the plan. That's inside. Uh, I've heard, I've heard this business about the, uh, this construction lane and so forth and I've never heard any serious thought except about, about getting the horrendous mess out of the center of town twice a day. It does not seem to be a concern. And quite frankly, I think those things need to be addressed and I think we have to participate in addressing those things because Colbertdale and our interest may well not be the same and I personally don't want to submit requests to Colbertdale if they, they decide that they don't like and don't go long. And that has no, that has no bearing on my respect for Colbertdale Township. I think it's our job to do it and I think we need to do it. That's, that's enough of me.
I think that fairly represents, uh, the position of the planning commission.
Just one...
No, I'm sorry.
I want to make sure I understand. Uh, you're in favor of the extension to help in the traffic condition?
Oh, I'm in favor of finding a way to remove it from East Philadelphia Avenue, I'll tell you that.
Right.
Because it's only going to get worse and worse and worse.
The extension is, like, I'm staying, a lot of people are thinking, let me just mention the two concerns that we have from a planning standpoint is, number one, it will help alleviate traffic. It provides better circulation to and from the site, obviously. Uh, the other concern is that, well, is it going to be a cut through for people? Uh, just to let you know, we had other studies, should we bring it through the school site to make it more circuitous so it, so it isn't an opportunity for people to just, you know, come through here real fast, but there's a lot of kids playing and causing...
And everyday daily three, right.
So, that's a valid concern. I just wasn't sure, uh, what you were trying to emphasize there.
I believe that you could address that as well.
Yeah.
And then just for your information, prior to the, uh, the end of school, there was a traffic study, uh, done of the site. Uh, it's addressing the impact of ninth grade coming into the building. There were traffic counts done around Borough and also in the township. Uh, that traffic study is, I think, being compiled Jim and where...
Right now they, they've completed the counts and they're in the process of preparing the traffic assessment or the scoping order, which will be reviewed with the Borough and Township vote, uh, in order to determine the impact of, of the, before they go through with the rest of the traffic.
And then they also have recommendations on, uh, the connection of Borough going through. So, we will have that information and we'll, we'll share with you with some actual counts and the impacts of that.
Chris, or members of council, any additional questions or comments, these gentlemen?
I have a couple of comments. The zoning, uh, issues, I don't think we could, uh, transfer that responsibility to Colbertdale. That's something that has to be done. So, at a minimum, uh, with Borough has to do a zoning review, issue comments on, on the zoning issues and then any relief from the zoning ordinance that may be, uh, requested by the school district. You have to go through the Borough zoning area. So, that, I don't think there's a legal way to do it any other time. As to the land development review process, clearly it is an option for the Borough to do its, uh, separate land development, land review. Uh, we have every right to do that here at the Borough. Uh, just as, uh, an example of, of modification of that, that I am in the process of, right now in another municipality. We have a large industrial building that actually is physically located in three contiguous municipalities. So, it's a complex review, uh, and planning project. And what we have done there is that each of the three municipalities do, uh, their zoning review separately, but then, uh, the respective engineers for the three municipalities got together and decided that, well, one municipality has primary stormwater impacting, is going to do stormwater analysis for the whole project. Another one has, uh, is providing utility services and is going to handle it for the whole project. Another municipality has traffic impacts and is going to take responsibility for the traffic review. Uh, and in that manner, there is an allocation of responsibility so that none of the three municipalities is giving up their ultimate authority to approve the plan, but they are simplifying the process more as some cost savings, uh, and that has been mutually agreeable. Here, what I think is probably most important to Borough, it sounds like it's, uh, traffic. And, um...
Well, if I may interrupt, traffic and initially parking appears as though the parking issue would be, I suppose, sufficiently missed here.
Yes, I'm sorry. And, and what, what I'm hearing is, you know, I'm not sure where the Borough's review is to go. Obviously we don't want to prejudge traffic analysis until we have received a complete report and have, uh, the conclusions of that report presented to the Borough. Uh, but it's possible that the Borough might not want to grant approval of a land development plan that doesn't have certain outcomes with regard to traffic or being to the satisfaction of the Borough. So, that I think will be a very important reason not to grant a, an unconditional waiver of land development review to the township. So, anyway, the, the essence of my comments are that I don't think we can, uh, transfer responsibility for zoning, that, um, it would be perfectly appropriate for the Borough to do a complete land development review, but that it is possible, I think, for the Borough to have a limited scope land development plan review through, uh, an agreement with, uh, the school district and Colbertdale Township about how responsibility could be allocated for certain aspects, not including traffic and park. Uh, I, I don't think Colbertdale would want to transfer responsibility for parking and , and traffic to the, to the Borough either. I think both municipalities have... I think both municipalities have a, a great interest in that subject.
Uh, so where do we go from here to try to move this along, be cooperative with everyone, but yet, you know, still the Borough?
Well, uh, in order to move this forward, I assume that you're eager to move forward from the project. I would suggest that there be an application submitted to the Borough and that, um, between now and, you know, the next round of planning commission meetings, which are when?
Second.
Second.
That's next week already?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's pretty quick. But, but if representatives of the school district would appear to the planning commission and then propose some allocation of responsibility between Borough and Township, is that something the Borough council would be, you know, would you recommend to the planning commission that they entertain that or not? Again, not a waiver, but just a, that's an allocation of primary review responsibility for certain subjects like, for example, stormwater or grading or some of the technical aspects that Borough may not feel that needs to maintain before.
Charles, what do you think?
Uh, I'd like to say, I'd want to, to, to explore the idea, but no, no harm to the matter.
I, I just have a concern that this isn't part of your discussion at this point, but most of these people here are concerned about that old building. And you're talking about here that maybe after two years, you might not need that old building. It gets severed and then we've got a big elephant, a big, deep elephant sitting there. Is there any way that you can assure us of some kind of permanent connection, the old building to the, to the new? See, because I was actually thinking that, I didn't know that you were not going to continue with the, the driveway that went totally around the school.
That was part of the opposition.
And that perhaps that there will be some kind of bridge of some sort to connect the two and you can still have your driveway that went around the school.
Well, if I may also to add on to that, I mean, obviously there was a lot of discussion and a lot of concern by the public about this and obviously the, the decision was to retain the old building, okay, which you've informed. And now I'm just, for my part, learn that you're not going to tear down the stairwell in between that spot. But as Mary Ann said, I think basically, you know, I heard these gentlemen say that they continue to be used as classrooms, uh, while the construction is going. Again, from the borough and standpoint, we're concerned what happens after that, as Mary Ann says, when, when your new facilities are complete, you have the room you need, you're not going to need that for a classroom anymore. And now it becomes an expense to the school district, I assume, to maintain. You just can't let it sit. I assume it has to have, you know, utilities and insurance and so forth and so on. And, and then, then what happens? Uh, because, you know, and just my personal feelings, I don't see it as a viable, uh, solution to someone outside of the school because they have absolutely zero parking for that, you know? So I guess what, what we're saying is we would like to see that renovated and incorporated into usage as school facilities. I realize that's a significant cost to increase, but what can you tell us about the future of that building at this time beyond two years from now?
Um, there's really not much we can tell you for certain. Uh, the formation of the, uh, community committee is, is still growing. Uh, I'm following maybe, you know, somebody else's plan or something, uh, so that we can, you know, interpret exactly what that use is going forward. Uh, but, but there is no certainty what's going to happen after two years. The board resolution has, it doesn't stand right now, is that it will remain standing and that it will remain connected. Uh, but it's, it's future use, I think, to be determined and, uh, we're hoping that this community committee can, uh, give us some kind of idea of what's going to happen when we're done using it for the phase and during the construction period.
I realize that, you know, the future use of that kind of doesn't have a bearing on what you're asking for now. Uh, but, you know, in, in reality, it, it does for, for the reasons that I've, I've mentioned, uh, in that, you know, what happens to it if you no longer have a, a usage for it, that affects the Borough. If, if we could be assured that it was going to be, uh, rolled into, uh, classroom usage and, and continue, we could be more comfortable with whatever the final plans are here for the traffic flow and parking and so forth and so on. So that's why we're asking this question. I realize we're asking something about the future and we have a, you know, the future holds.
Just real quick, have, have full land development plans been prepared and the stormwater and to combat? So this is really, I mean, conceptual, but it could be potentially.
We're still early in the process.
And there's early in the process.
Still have some time to talk about this as we go through it.
For your, for, for that.
They were looking, well, like Mark said, maybe in, what, December, December, then a year later. Well, I mean, but we're close on submitting the land development.
So do I understand, and maybe I don't have the flow correct here, so please correct me if I don't, but you would like to have, for lack of another term, all your i's dotted and t's crossed and before this project goes out for bid, correct?
Correct.
So basically, from my standpoint, sitting here on the Borough, there's no way that I want to give approval to a plan to go out for bid without knowing for sure that there's going to be something addressing traffic out of town, in particular, the extension of Monroe Street. And you have that as an add-on to the bid?
Well, to add on, uh, in, in the specifications we're going to have to build in, if that's going to be the construction entrance, we don't want all the heavy equipment, concrete trucks and work in Borough. It would make sense that we would have to rough that in. So, uh, really, the alternate add-on is going to be the finishing of the construction entrance two years down the road. So I, I'd have to talk to the architects about how much that would cost as far as putting the, the finish in. But, I mean, the road's already paved. The other, the other alternative is to, you know, uh, make it grass again, but I don't see that as, as being a very efficient use of, of, of our funds, especially when we do need better traffic flow, uh, after certain events.
I understand your concern, but you understand our concern. I mean.
It sounded like, it sounded like, you know, you know, again, depending on the money, that may not occur. And, and that's a concern for us. You can hear, everybody here, it's traffic coming through and, and without that, that it's, everything's going to come through the Borough. That's our concern and parking, you know? I don't want to speak for everybody else, but that is my concern. You know, stormwater is going to flow downhill and it flows into Cobra Dale. Hopefully that, you know, that's what they're going to have to look at. You know, conservation district, the NS, a lot of the buildings all are, my concern is traffic and parking because, you know, that's what ends up happening. They park at CBS and they walk in, the buses come through the town and, you know, with some type of way to alleviate it, it would go far. And that's where I would be as far as not waiving the land development.
So we're, we're having a facilities committee meeting next, next Tuesday night, starting at five thirty, the education center, and we're going to be communicating once we're talking about here at that meeting. And so, and so we'll express that the council would be, uh, more, uh, comfortable with the proposal if, if we took it out as an add, just put it into the, into the.
Yeah, al- along with, you know, one of the things that, um, you know, your traffic study's going to have to be looked at and, and, you know, again, you, you, you know, I think the traffic study, I won't give a good indication of, you know, I picture in my mind that that's going to alleviate the traffic through there, but will it? You know, and, or, or what are ways that we can, you know? So, but yes.
So at this point, I think we've determined that at the next planning commission meeting, we'd be able to have someone.
Like, so that's next week and we have a facility?
At the same time.
We start at five thirty.
What's, what's the mean, what's the date? I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
It's an hour. I'm here.
Okay. So, so if our facilities committee is not done by seven, you could run over here and address it. And, and this would be to discuss, uh, an agreement or application between the school district, the Borough and Cobra Dale now.
Well, hypothetically, that, you know, as Mr. Fryer said, planning commission will need to hear you out, but I'm just offering it as a, as a, an option that you may want to pursue by making a presentation to the planning commission, uh, requesting some reasonable allocation of responsibility for some of the technical aspects, which I do think would be a savings to you of not having two engineers reviewing things that don't need to be reviewed by two engineers. Uh, one will be sufficient, but clearly you've heard here tonight that there are things that Borough is interested in, distinct very often. So, but anyway, so that I would suggest that if you are able to have a representative appear to the planning commission meeting next week and suggest some reasonable allocation of responsibility for certain areas of the plant, which could then be the basis of agreement with township and the school district.
And I, I have no problem and it's the intent of, you know, although we were asking for waiver, if you see the letter, we were going to submit full documentation with the both municipalities. It's just a question at that point, maybe after the initial review, we can just have a meeting and, and go from there. I, you know, that might be, because then everybody has an opportunity to put their concerns on the table and then a lot of, a lot of the comments could be duplications.
Well, it might be appropriate when you have a full submission that our engineer could take a look at it and say, yeah, we probably need to be involved in certain of these technical reviews. So that might be a better time in the next week to have that discussion about allocation of review responsibility.
But next week would be similar to the discussion we had here, bringing it up to speed.
Yeah, and I, I do think you want to build that bridge because I think it was, um, it wasn't helpful that no one was at the planning commission meeting and there may have been practical reasons for that, but, um, I think that should be handled a different way.
Chris, let me ask you, is there any point in, in, in this that it would be beneficial to have a special meeting of Cobra Dale and Boier Town Planning Commissions together to move this along or if we, if we can get an, an agreement, uh, basically on next Tuesday about, you know, what, what the Borough's, you know, concerns or, or is, uh, looking at ourselves as opposed to not, is that sufficient or not?
Well, I think there's a couple of things that are going to happen as soon as we want it, that there'll be some discussion next week just to sort of bring the planning mission up to date with what we discussed tonight. And, um, then there will be a full plan submission when you are ready to make that in the near future. And at that point, I would suggest that we get the, the engineers for each of the two municipalities doing a sort of preliminary review of what the project looks like without doing full blown technical reviews. And at that point, it may be appropriate to have a joint planning commission meeting and talk about an allocation of, uh, responsibility and make recommendations to prospective governing bodies about what that allocation would look like. And, uh, from that point forward, hopefully it's a simplified process, uh, beyond that. But I do think that may be helpful to do.
So then I think remaining tonight, we need to take action on.
Waiver that's pending.
And the recommendation from, from the planning commission goes to reject that, that we, um, I think we need.
I would recommend that you just post that.
That we need to approve that recommendation for, for judgment.
We need to deny the waiver.
Right. Okay. Uh, I would like to, to make that motion, uh, to deny the waiver request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second of I. Was that Mr. Maloney?
What?
Any further discussion? Pat, please.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Preston? Mrs. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Endy?
Aye.
Mr. Bass?
Aye.
Mr. Gignan? And Mr. Deere?
Aye. Motion is approved. Uh, at this point, it's not really a normal procedure, but I know the gentlemen probably want to move along. I would like to ask any other comments from the public on this item? Uh, name and, and residence, please.
Yeah, Clyde Muck, I live across from the high school, four twenty East Fourth Street. Uh, I don't know how well the council has followed all the goings on with the, trying to get this, uh, this building added on to. And I've been to some of the meetings, not all of them. Uh, it started out where they found out that they didn't have enough space for the elementary kids. So what they decided to do is add on to the senior high. Now, does that make any sense at all? It caused, uh, I'm, I'm going to coin a phrase that, uh, one of the board members said, uh, Joe Nichols, he called it a Boier Town boom dawdle. And the thing's been fraught with changes and inconsistencies from the start, from what I've seen. So I, I just think council ought to look into the history of how they got to where they are now before they make any, uh, decisions. That's all I have.
All right. Just one comment, Mr. Muck, is in that you realize the council only has authority over the area that's within the Borough boundary.
Yes.
The rest of it is Cobra Dale's responsibility.
Yes.
Any other comments on this item? Yes, name and residence?
I'm Dan at Muck. I live at four twenty East Fourth Street. First of all, I have to commend the council and mayor to allow them the time to tell their story because they allowed the public ninety seconds at the meeting that was held at Junior High West. And let's see, um, my other concern is, um, their traffic study, we paid thirteen thousand dollars for that traffic study. Montgomery Avenue is a state highway. I was homesick and my husband is, is retired and there was a man standing on the corner over at Monroe and Fourth Street. So my husband went out and asked him what he's doing. He's doing the traffic study. My husband said, don't you have to put something down? No, I'm going to count them manually. What kind of a traffic study is that?
There was a guy with clipboard and a pencil.
And then you have, well, there's a caravan in the morning and in the afternoon after school is over. We counted twenty-six buses, but I think there's a heck of a lot more than that. I just don't think, if they can use the old building for the kids while the construction's going on, why can't they use it for good? It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Lechter?
Yes, I'd like to comment again. We have a, a process in place, uh, providing us with checks and balances. Um, too much of what I hear, what I heard tonight is, uh, still under development and, and given too little consideration. Uh, we should not deny ourselves the process or we should allow the process to go forward because, for the simple reason, it provides us with the safeguards we need to complete a task successfully without a disaster. Expediency, we're, we're to be expedient and where's that going to leave us? To disaster. We have a process in place, allow it to go forward with, irregardless of excuses. Um, there's an old saying about, uh, poor planning. If, if, you know, if, if you can't get your planning straight, I'm not going to adopt it. Uh, I'm not going to adopt that attitude for expediency.
Mr. Lechter, may I, are you not satisfied with the act of that?
No, I am. I, I definitely am, but, uh, I'm, I'm still, I'm still not satisfied with what I'm, what, what we're getting from the Boier County Area School District. Uh, one of the most serious concerns that I heard Mr. Endy addressed and, oh, by the way, um, I mean no disrespect and I want to underline that and emphasize it, the Cobra Dale Township, they have been wonderful neighbors. Uh, we've had a very excellent. We've had a very excellent relationship with Culverdale. But as Mr. Endy alluded to, the war problem will be theirs, and we already have a stormwater problem, aside from our, our piping and so forth in that area, very close to the school, just off of Stafford Drive, not unrelated to any war situation in the borough. So the impact, of course, will be Culverdale's. We want to be partners and work with them. We have a process in place, allow it, let's, let's involve ourselves, and let's take our time and get the job done to avoid any future disasters and unwelcome events. Thanks.
Mr. Derry, may I say one thing else? There are going to be five new board members coming in at the election. I don't think it's fair that the five new ones have to go by what the ones now are saying. Somehow, they have to have a voice in this, and I just don't think we're being right about it. They're trying to push it through too fast, and the question is, why?
Well, they understand that's beyond our control.
Yeah, I know, I just want the public to be aware.
Any other comments on this item? Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time and explanation, and we'll look forward to seeing some representatives at the next meeting. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, if you'd like to be a educator. I know you're educators. I thought if we just take about a two-minute recess here, allow these gentlemen to...